And with that, I'll turn it over to Kim Kriner-Richi, who's going to walk us through the Open Space Development Plan update.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Kim Kriner-Richi, Sustainability Manager for Douglas County. I'm going to introduce the rest of my open space team here. We have Carl Bauer, County Planner; Tanya Voit, Zoning and Codes Director; Christina Katcher-Webb, who's a planner for our partner Logan Simpson; Caitlin Amerlin, who is the Heritage Conservation Coordinator for Douglas County. And we are all staff contributing to the development of this open space plan. And this afternoon, we're here to bring you an update, as the title of our work session indicates. Throughout the presentation, we are going to provide highlights from the community outreach that we conducted over the spring and summer of this year. Show you how we -- or demonstrate how we applied what we learned from the community to some very preliminary drafts of planned components. And then we are also going to show you some illustrations and examples of structures and tools that may be used to sustain an open space program into the future. All of these elements, we are actively taking public feedback on right now. And I will turn it over, Christina, to carry us into the presentation.
Thanks, Kim. Commissioners, thank you for having us this afternoon. My name -- Real into, okay. Gotcha. Okay. Oh, yeah, I hear it. I really work on my posture. So as a quick reminder, our project goals of the Open Space Plan is really to create a vision for the entire community, not only for Douglas County staff, but also partners, nonprofits, adjacent agencies, municipalities, to look forward to understanding how we can preserve future open spaces, what our priorities are for natural resources while providing equitable public access to our environment. And so this plan, we are about halfway through. We're just starting our second phase of outreach before we complete the draft plan and have that out for you guys next year. And so we're going to go over what we heard from the first phase of outreach, which ran from about April to July. We had a mailed questionnaire that went out to the unincorporated counties. We got almost 1,000 responses, which is huge. That was a really good response rate, especially from a lot of folks that were from the unincorporated parts of the county and longtime residents. We had a series of focus groups, over 60 people, almost 60 people represented heritage groups, conservation groups, government partners, and landowners themselves to provide us feedback on where we think this open space plan should go. We also had public workshops, thanks to Commissioner Wiley, I think, was there, as well as out at Lone Star Lake, where we had additional public feedback gathered. We had a wonderful county tour, meeting with landowners, farmers, heritage folks all around the county while we were here in June. So what did we hear from all of that public input? We summarized them into a couple key topics, as you can see here. Environmental and wildlife preservation, obviously a big focus, protecting wetlands, woodlands, prairies, forests, and all of those areas. Recreation and enjoyment, looking at passive outdoor recreation, not only for our physical benefits, but for mental health, which we know is a community priority as well. Protection of agricultural lands. We definitely heard that the Centennial Farms and Sesquicentennial Farms are important to this community. Escape from urbanization, thinking about how this plan can shape development and provide open spaces for a community to enjoy, you know, free and open spaces. Balancing economic use is an environmental concern, understanding that there's an ecosystem service that open space and protected lands provide, but also making sure that we're understanding the impacts to the landowners, property owners, in this community. Resistant to certain developments, we definitely heard about industrial-scale activities happening throughout the community. Public access in community spaces. In this realm, we heard a lot about equity and providing access to folks that might not have their large land or want to have that recreation opportunity. And then, of course, historical and cultural preservation with historic homesteads, recreation areas that provide that cultural preservation. This is another way to look at some of the survey responses that we got. You can again see wildlife is up there, water quality, ag, and that historic-cultural landmark as well. Of course, we heard a lot from a lot of different people. We have a whole summary that's posted up on the Open Space website, so you can look through all of the input that we got. We asked about specific areas, which we'll talk about here in a minute, and then we also collected all the feedback from the focus groups and listed out that by focus groups. You can see all that details. But here are just some additional topics that we, you know, we heard from the community, from housing to equity to clean water, nature, education, a whole bunch of different topics that this plan would like to see and address. So what did we do with all of this feedback? We created what's called the Vision and Values. Oops, going too fast. So the vision is a statement that provides guiding direction for the ideal future of land uses in Douglas County. We hope that this vision and then the community values is not only used in this plan, but we have partners, agencies, municipalities, all of those partners and landowners who can support and use these vision and values in their plans and their work plans and other operations and management as we go forward. So the vision statement is, I'll just read this one real quick. "To nurture a community dedicated to preserving and enhancing our natural environment through inclusive stewardship, innovative partnerships, and responsible resource management, fostering a harmonious future where biodiversity, heritage, and well-being flourish." So the vision is supported by these community values. I'll just hit on some key points that you'll see a lot of repetitiveness in that community-driven feedback that we got, so you can hopefully see those, that we have represented the community feedback in these value statements. So definitely focusing on protecting and enhancing the natural environment, focusing on areas where wetlands and wildlife and prairies and riparian corridors thrive, empowering partnerships with willing landowners, and continuing to provide incentives, education, and we'll talk a little bit about that as we move forward with our potential solutions. Continue to support the local food system, both through local farming as well as other opportunities. Creative and culturally-inclusive land stewardship, so thinking about how we may not be able to farm, and this kind of leads into the next one about adaptability on unpredictable climate future, to making sure that the land and how we're using it today may not be how we use it in the future. But it's still important to think about how we are conserving and working with the land. Continuing on on the second slide here, definitely a lot of interest in working with partners through all of those different sectors, recreation, heritage, conservation, and ag. I'll continue to say partners, partners, partners in all of this. Supporting the creation of a connected network, recreation network, so this like the physical connection through trails. We heard a lot about trails and using our waterway corridors to provide that open space and provide that physical connectivity. Safe access to public spaces, so looking at different abilities, cultures, demographics, and geographic areas to make sure everyone has some sort of public access. And promoting the natural beauty, historic landmarks, and maintaining that rural character, all with the idea of financially and environmentally focused. Okay. In the Open Space Plan, we are starting to look at these priority areas and how we identify the priority areas. So we have the vision, we have the values, and we boil that down to some conservation criteria that we can hopefully map. Not all of these are, you know, one-to-one mappable, but most of them are because we're looking at wetlands and riparian areas and wildlife habitat buffers from existing protected lands, working farms, historical and cultural resources, and then public use and current land management practices. So a lot of these already have some conservation tools associated with them. We can look at land dedication, conservation easements, the current ag and natural resource protection agreement. So these are different types of conservation tools that we can use that helped us look at providing our preliminary solutions. So like I said, we took the conservation criteria, and then we were able to map some of those resources, like wetlands and farmlands and waterways and floodplains. So we took all those areas to provide input into our priority areas map. So the priority areas map, you can see on here, just to orient you, we have the cities and we have the Lawrence slash Douglas County growth tiers. And then we mapped in the blue, and it's looking kind of orange up there, colors, priorities for open spaces, and then waterways. So these areas, as we create a plan, is to be used for planning purposes, so where we can focus our energy, focus our partnerships.
Christina, I don't want, sorry to interrupt you. I also, sorry, this is Kim Kriner-Richi, Sustainability Manager. Just want to clarify the title of the slide here and the approach to this mapping, that really we're trying to, it's a very early stab at representing some of the values of land assets that we heard from the community over, through our outreach period, that we heard through meeting with, you know, conservation focus groups, landowner focus groups, that this is an early representation of what we heard and the mapping tools available to us. This is not complete, this is not in stone, this is not intended to say we're going to aim to conserve every acre within these colors. It's also not to preclude that we're going to discover conservation opportunities outside of this, or learn through this outreach process that we need to re-approach some process in this map. So I just, it's a guide and it's a starting place for the public to react to. And you as well, Commissioners, just wanted to add that.
Yeah, we intentionally made the buzzy, the boundary fuzzy because we recognize that there's opportunities outside of these areas, and we by no means think that all of this land should be conserved and definitely not, you know, acquired. And we would only work with willing landowners in this area for different types of projects and provide resources and supporting across the county no matter what. Okay. So some of our preliminary solutions, we're going to talk about different types of program models. So we've heard consistently from the community that open space is important. We've identified these visions, these values, we've mapped different open space criteria. But what does it actually look like to put that into action? We can do a number of things that are currently in place, and/or we could create new ways to implement the future of open space in Douglas County. So these first three are kind of an extension or just continuing to do what we already do across the county. So without fail, partnerships are very important. A lot of folks, and you can see in that right-hand column around implementation partners, there's a lot of state, local, county-wide resources that are already doing so much in this space that we want to continue to support, partner with, provide education to landowners and partners, and convene those partners to make the open space priorities in this plan come to life. We could implement some of the open space protections through planning and zoning. We could expand, for example, agricultural, allowed uses in agricultural areas for economic benefits. We could look at open space dedications, or we could even look at landscaping standards and, you know, dark sky ordinances to make sure that wildlife values, waterway values, those are all being enhanced and we are using best management practices. Then we could look at expanding the Heritage Conservation Council grant program. So right now, the HCC grant program funds a lot of stewardship and land conservation practices, and it's a growing amount that we're seeing grant applications for. So we can continue to do what we're doing and fund the amount of programs through that program, or seek additional funding to expand that existing grant program. These next two slides are some additional tools and ways that the open space energy could be focused. One of those is to create an open space department. Right now, as Kim was introducing the team for this open space plan, you heard three, four, or five different departments. Open space doesn't have one true home, but it's being championed by a number of different departments, which is great, especially in this time, but as we grow and these priorities become more important, a dedicated program with dedicated funding might be needed to further enhance and provide implementation. This department could facilitate public access, provide more resources to landowners, work on stewardship of county properties, and look at how we are enhancing those natural resource values. Similar to the HCC grant program, we could look at an open space grant program that's just unique to open space. We could have funding that goes a little bit farther to conserve land, provide funding for landowners. One example could be if there was an open space grant program, they could help with the transaction cost of a willing landowner to put their property in a conservation easement. So we have a lot of partners, you could apply for funding, funding like that, like either the landowner or a partner or nonprofit could apply for that type of funding. We could look at a specific allocation for this or a general fund, from the general fund or a dedicated funding source. If there was a county program, of course, it'd be great if they could accept land or monetary donations, but you would need like some sort of department in place. Similarly, if you had a department in place, a citizen-led initiative to create an open space foundation would promote advocacy for the program, that could raise dollars, get out the word on different needs of the department. And a foundation doesn't typically own their own land or manage it, it would just be in support of a county department. And then lastly, if the county would own land and it still sits in like a valuable agricultural area, you could lease that land back to like the adjacent farmer to make it more economical to farm both pieces of property. So that's just one sort of opportunity to put our conservation values first and making sure that the county could see different types of conservation-oriented farming practices put into place as like a demonstration farm or some sort of existing way of development of agricultural land, working with extension and conservation district, for example. So there's a lot of different opportunities and different types of programs. And like Kim was saying, we're asking the public right now to provide input on what type of program. You know, some of these are things that we could currently do and expand, or we could make implementation go a little bit farther, creating new types of departments or programming. So we've talked a little bit about some funding sources. So I'm going to move to the next slide, and just give me a moment to work through this with you guys. So we've continually heard how important open space is. And the county can continue to work with partners, gather grants, but even if you apply for federal grants, there's a lot of federal dollars out there right now for open space and sustainability and outreach, but you truly need a local match, just like the grant that help, is helping to pay for this plan. You need local matches, you need staff to help apply for those grants. And so as we look to decide what level of implementation the county will be in, we will adjust these numbers and look at how much funding we would actually need. If you're just going to do a grant program, if you're going to expand the HCC grant program, it could be, you know, less than $500,000 to get started. If you really want a truly full open space department, like I've heard and we've hear from the community, that we might need to look at something bigger. And as we go into drafting the plan, we will match these two together. So once we hear from the community what type of program we should implement, and once we hear from the community what level of support they are willing to fund, then we can match those two together. If we hear, you know, there's a lot of support for funding, then let's go big and do a big program. But if we're hearing less, then let's put together more of a phased approach. So once we are ready to draft that plan, we're going to look at matching these two priorities together. If we hear from the community that I want to do all of those things on that list, then we're going to have to match funding to that. So by no means does this look at a feasibility study for exactly how much funding we would need, but this is just an example. So traditionally, how we see funding communities across the country, the trust for public land supports, different types of ballot measures around property tax and sales tax, it's one of the main funding sources that we have in our toolbox. Of course, we'll continue to look at those grants and those partnerships and other solutions. But just for an example, we took some ideas around the property tax to generate funding, and you can see there the public share, which is only on, those numbers are only on public, or sorry, on residential properties. So like I said, we didn't do a complete feasibility study, that's just like quick, honestly, napkin calculations of what we could generate and how much that would impact everybody. So for about a $500,000 house, that's about $24 a month in taxes. So we just looked at five mil, honestly, it was just a round number. We know the current mil's around 44. We also know that this level of funding would definitely pass how much money is used for wells overlook or Lone Star Lake and the mowing operations that Public Works manages these properties right now is only about $1 million. So this is definitely a lot more than that would need. And then also, we looked at sales tax recently, it was what, 2018, 2019, the sales tax for the mental health passed, and that was a quarter percent. So we just looked at that as an example number. So every 25 cents on $100, for example, would be added. So that would be an additional 0.25% to the current county, 1.25%. So you can kind of see how that funding would shake out. So it's important to think about the level of impact that we want to make, and as we ask the community to weigh in on this, we're going to make sure that we match the willing and the vision and values to this funding, so we can, when we come out with a draft plan, we're going to look at adjusting these numbers. These are just kind of examples. So the community and what we're doing, yeah.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
So the idea was to go out and to ask people to come, either to fill out a survey or to come to an open space focus group, right? When you think ahead on some of these proposals, there may be some people out there who don't have any interest in open space and may not complete a survey, or may not come to a focus group, but may care more about what's on this slide. Are you going to talk about how you're going to engage those groups in Phase Two?
Because they don't want open space, they might not come out. Okay, I get what you're saying. So yeah, in Phase Two, we are, maybe, go ahead.
Back to that slide, I just want to note, those don't match some of my estimates that I use for budget purposes, so let's just make sure we get right, I mean, we generate more than that in sales tax on the quarter cent. So like, let's just make sure we get you guys the right info on, and for some of that stuff, so as you do that work.
I'd come back a little bit to Commissioner Kelly's point, and maybe the other side of that is, a lot of folks, when you're asked, "Do you care about something?", the answer is yes. Do you care about something enough to pay for a program that supplies that? That's a very different question. So I just think, you're right, that is the next question to ask, but I think we shouldn't get too far ahead of ourselves to say people value open space, they want open space. That may not be connected to a conversation about whether they'd like to pay for it through a sales tax or a property tax. So I think that is going to be, I mean, that's one of the issues that certainly rises to the top with me, but certainly I think will with the public as you bring that out. But Commissioner Kelly brings a great point. I was thinking in terms of the folks who do value open space and asking that question of, in what way do you value it and how do you want to support it? But the folks that did not come forward or self-select as being people who wanted to speak and value open space, those people all have a voice in this also. How do we reach those voices?
Great point. Yeah, so the questionnaire is open through November 12th, so we have plenty of time to get the word out and hopefully working with our different notification methods to make sure that the survey is connected to any discussion around this topic. And so, yes, we put out notifications that the open space plan is out there, but now that the headlines are about the tax, let's make sure that the survey is connected to that conversation as well. So we still have plenty of time to that, and also, this is not a ballot measure test and study. We're just trying to understand a little bit about the willingness to pay. The, one of the recommendations will probably be to hire, like Trust for Public Land to do, they do specific ballot measure testing. So we haven't put together any recommendations of what this would support or how this would be looked at, and that type of study, that feasibility study, just like you probably did for the sales tax for the behavioral health, mental health, would be a next step to make sure that we address all of the areas and all of the constituents that you have.
And I would think before, long before that step, it would have to come to the Commission to find out if there is enough interest to go to that level, because that, we're still way ahead, I think, of any of those discussions.
That's true.
As well in Kansas, so there's, we have limitations on what we can issue sales tax for specifically, so we would need legislation or authorization from Topeka to even ask for the ballot language for that, so.
And I thought you'd.
I'll have another question unless you're ready.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just curious about how you're going about youth engagement. It was kind of mentioned at the beginning of the slides and then again here. It's a, it's a hard demographic for us to hear from, but it's folks that have, you know, a really important point of view because they're the only, the only reason we make plans is for the future and for future generations, and we want to value what they bring to it, but it's sometimes hard to capture those voices.
So we haven't fully gotten to promoting this yet, but we are having a youth-focused open house on the evening of November 9th, 5:30 at the Sunrise Project. So we'll be pushing out marketing for that, and we're doing that in partnership with Sunrise, and that will be for our higher ed population, our high school population, anyone who considers themselves youthful and wants to come and talk about the open space plan, and that'll be open house style as well. And then I am going to Lawrence High School to have a conversation with some environmental studies.
studies classes over lunch on the 8th. So making some more attempts to get some youth input.
That's great. And I think going to where they're already located, super important. So in the high schools, maybe even multiple high schools. And there are some great student groups on campus, on our various campuses in Douglas County, that I think could be, would be excited to be asked, would bring people that would really have an important point of view. So I think that they, a lot of, I think those groups might do a lot of the legwork for you in terms of bringing people to the table if you're willing to come to them.
Yeah, that pretty much wraps up. Like I said, we are in the second phase of our three outreach phases. So we'll come back to the commission when we have the draft plan to get your input on the final recommendations. Like I said, we're still just kind of gut checking all of the potential opportunities right now. And then we'll be in front of the public with the draft plan in January, and then hopefully a recommendation in the spring for adoption. All I have.
If I, just a minute, I want to go back to the funding question, and it's not necessarily that we have to look at tax numbers. I just wanted to add to the conversation that, you know, as Christina mentioned, these are the types of solutions that we've seen. She, in her expertise, has seen other communities apply to programs like this. We have gotten some mixed reactions through our surveys so far. Some difficult questions from our advisory committee so far. And so we realize that we need to be creative in our solutions. It might not be one silver bullet dollar amount that helps us foresee open, you know, bring open space program to fruition. But there also is a sense of urgency. There is incredible pressure on our land. And so we know, we also are grappling with that. We're in a unique and important time to make something happen valuable for our community. And we want to find the right solution, but we, but there's urgency. So we're just, we'll keep trying to be creative and find the right thing.
I appreciate that, Kim. This is Commissioner Reed, and I think, you know, it's important to note that it's, it's going to take a diversity of tactics, if you will. It's going to be many different types of solutions for different identified issues. And so I think that's important to keep in mind, that it's a spectrum of things. I'm curious, this is an open-ended question to anybody who wants to jump in and share feedback about what the process, if the process has revealed to you opportunities that are sort of immediately and tangibly in front of us, that are maybe simple solutions that just didn't really, nobody thought of or said out loud, you know, to use your word, solution, but, or strategies perhaps, to sort of enhance work that's already being done and relationships that already exist, that is, I suppose, for lack of a better phrase, like low hanging fruit, right? Not big, we're looking at some big theoretical recommendations, and a lot of them are geared towards sort of an increase in staff or department capacity. And those are sort of long-term, bigger picture solutions that we are in very preliminary phases. I'm interested, as this process goes along, like, what is being revealed about, maybe it's lack of awareness or knowledge about some of the conservation opportunities that already exist at a state level, on a regional level, that, things that some people know about, but not everybody knows about. And maybe it's just a matter of connecting dots for folks. That feels like an example of something that might be sort of low hanging fruit, that doesn't require big solutions, but just maybe like an on-the-surface opportunity to help connect dots sooner rather than later. Does that make sense, Kim? I'm seeing some head nods, but I know I took you on a ride there.
I have a response, but I'm sure it's not the only one, and it might, it might be a side answer to your question. But in terms of opportunities that, that we see and that we're actively pursuing is partnerships with our other governments within, working with, in, you know, in tangent with other of our, of the four cities, their parks and green space goals and those alignments, and what are they looking at with growth, and what are we looking at, and how can we synergize and work together? And so those conversations have been happening and will continue to happen. That's not necessarily low hanging fruit, or, or that raising that kind of awareness that you were getting at, but I think that that's worth mentioning.
Yeah, we heard a lot from our conservation-focused groups that there's a lot of resources out there, from NRCS to the Land Trust, and put maybe just convening some sort of talking, meeting series that says, like, these are the opportunities, if you don't know about them, and getting together all of those partners to say, today, we're going to talk about conservation easements, tomorrow, we're going to talk about soil conservation programs, we're going to talk about grant opportunities. And so putting together more educational pieces, brochures, kind of having like a one-stop-shop, like a website that links you to state, federal, local resources that are all working in this space. I think I heard that one, as something that we could do, low hanging fruit, just kind of getting people together more.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, you painted a few different examples that I'm sort of thinking of, and just, just existing opportunities that might meet that sense of urgency that you're talking about, Kim, that some people are showing up with and having, whether it be about their land, or, you know, their land in particular, or other parts of the county that they are concerned about, right? And so I guess what I sort of mean to say and comment on is that I hope along the way as this process continues forward and we're thinking sort of thousand-foot view, big potential policy recommendations or, or opportunities for the commission to consider in the future, what along the way presents itself as sort of simple opportunities, for lack of a better phrase, to start making improvements around just public awareness of those resources? And are we identifying, are we hearing from any of those partners, some of which you just named, that have all these resources available? Are we hearing from them that the county could help support them in that work more, you know, like in conveying that information through their interaction with the public? I'm going to kick it to you, Tanya, because I see you pulling your mic.
Thank you. Tanya Voight, Zoning and Coats Director. One thing then, just kind of triggered for me was, when you think about conservation easements and you have landowners, we have landowners reach out to us all the time. They may be interested in development, they may be interested in preserving their farm forever and ever, but they have four kids, and they don't want those four kids fighting over it 20 years from now. And they talk a lot about the challenge of conservation easements and the costs associated with conservation easements, because conservation easements have costs that are built in perpetuity. So it, and legal fees and all kinds of things. So in a way, it makes them sometimes not as cost-effective. So when we were working on the zoning regulations, we identified that as a problem or a reoccurring issue that we were hearing, and we adopted that Agricultural Natural Resource Protection Agreement. And we do have people reach out to us who may have a home on five acres and have AD next to them, they never want that AD developed, and it is a free tool that they can use in our office, where we help them with the legal paperwork, and then we get that filed with the Register of Deeds, and it allows them to put some protections on it. The difference is, is that may not be a permanent protection in perpetuity forever, because if the property rezones or annexes into the city limits, then that protection agreement falls off. But that is a tool that we've been using at the local level that seems to be very helpful.
I've been really excited about that tool and just curious to kind of circle back and see how often that's, people are asking about it, but also how often it's been used. So can you speak to, how many people have accomplished that so far?
I wish I had those numbers with us. I'd say we probably have 30-ish filed agricultural natural protection resource agreements, which I think is pretty decent. Those regulations changed in 2020. It took us probably six months just to figure out how to implement them. So I'd say, and we probably have daily questions about it.
When I think about like the low hanging fruit, and I think some of those things maybe can happen, instead of the whole long education and outreach and finding resources and getting those to individuals, is what can we do policy-wise that actually allows tools that when people are calling for something else, you can say, we have this tool, do you want it? So I think about like, when we updated our ADUs for the rural area where you could put a second home on the same, like, homestead site, like, that freed up a lot of acreage that would otherwise have to have been divided into something separately, and then that kind of is the long, slow loss of that land for other purposes. So I think there's a lot of power there. I have no idea what that next tool is, but I think, I think Zoning and Coats is an excellent partner in this, because of being able to close the loop on, on some of these other education pieces, too.
To that, to that point, I think, one of the things that Tanya and I have talked about is floodplain, updated floodplain mapping. So maybe you could talk about, you know, if, I think that's going to inform a lot of this, and that's just going to help if, if that's a part of our policy, you know, which right now, you know, we prohibit building in the floodplain, and there's more to that. So talk about that.
Yeah, I think as we are facing kind of the changes in climate, flooding is here and it's real. And we do have homes that are not in the regulated floodplain that are flooding. So there are conversations that Kim and I have been having on the climate action side about, you know, do we need to take a step further? Do we need to regulate the 500-year floodplain? That way, we are placing some more protections on property. But ultimately, these are really amazing spaces where we can get multi-benefits from. If we're able to protect floodplains, we're protecting people from danger. We might be hopefully creating spaces for people to recreate as well. And then sometimes those are our best farm soils that we have. So you can get a lot of bang for floodplain protection. That's not just floodplain protection.
And it's, it's such a timely discussion. I think that the City of Lawrence kind of comes back and back to this conversation about, you know, we need land, where does that land come from? Much of Lawrence is bounded by floodplains. So I think, keeping in mind those ecosystem services that we get out of floodplains, a whole variety of them, but also, I just don't think it's widely known how much flooding we have in Douglas County that affects people's homes, that the first, you know, the first order of businesses don't make it worse, don't make, so like, we go to, we get the FEMA grant, I think, every year, and it's enough to buy out one frequently flooded property. And that's a slow, slow process. So definitely, I think there needs to be conversation, whether that's county, city, or everybody, about what those floodplains are for.
And I think it's really important to note that the properties that we are working on buyout on are existing properties that were built prior to floodplain regulations. They are not recently permitted homes. So those are really old homes along rivers that are dealing with repetitively being flooded. And we do get funding, we just got approved for another grant. So we will be, we're working with landowner right now in the unincorporated area of Lone Star on a buyout.
Tony, you kind of went to a spot where I was going to ask around the current conservation tools that are on that, and this is really for anyone. I'm interested to understand if any of those are not working well right now, you know, that we have these tools, but maybe we could make policy changes or other things to them that would make them work better for open space? Or are there tools there that, that you think we need to look at? Sort of as I looked at the report, it seemed like we jumped really quickly over a step of sort of some little steps that we might take. And so I just want to ask maybe about some of those little steps.
I have just a couple in mind. In relationship to heritage, the recent Rural Preservation Guidance document, they discussed at length with us, working on that ADU language, and having the ability to preserve historic structures and them not be limited, and build a second home, but them not be limited to our requirement of 1,400 square feet. So that's something that we are going to work on internally to support that plan. So that's something super small and fairly easy to implement on our end, that will save historic structures in the end and will not require demolition.
Is it something like only 2% of the historic structures are on the National Register in Douglas County?
Yeah, so we put together last week, we were here talking about the Rural Historic Resources Guide. So that's a document that compiles all this information on historic structures. And so that could be one tool is for protection. You know, when we were talking about structures, we were talking about the structures themselves, but their overlap here is really when you start thinking about farmsteads. And there's a little bit of open space protection if you consider a historic farmstead. You know, you have the farmhouse and the buildings themselves, but that's typically on a plot of land. So that could be one tool, is again, the heritage advocacy of, you know, helping more folks get their homes on National Register, which unlocks multiple incentives from the state and potentially federal tax credits, things like that. So that's just one piece. I think another point, too, to kind of emphasize is, you know, this list is like, kind of just a list, but I think the plan, the vision is to kind of have it be a little more structured and strategic in terms of what can be done potentially right away. And so really identifying those kind of more simple solutions, and then also, you know, and kind of have that transition period into like, okay, this is, this can be a vision for now, but also proposing like those bigger steps. So I don't think that jump will be as harsh, maybe, in the, in the final version of the plan.
Yeah, let's hear, we talked about the one for floodplain is de facto protection. It doesn't mean that you're in the floodplain, doesn't mean you're going to, it's not conserve for open space, you can, so looking at some of those floodplain regulations, I think that could work better. One of the tools already on there is conservation easements. We just talked about how that one's kind of a really hard, a barrier to overcome with the financing. So even some of those existing conservation tools are, are big and hard to actually put in place. So that's why we need something to really jumpstart this program.
I want to go back and make the connection to last week's discussion about the Heritage Conservation Guide, and also this plan had a similar theme that, and I'm looking back at the vision statement here. If, if this plan or guide is only to advocate for open space, it doesn't do us a lot of good as decision-makers if it doesn't provide any balance in how we weigh competing values and how we weigh being able to not save everything. Because when I look at this vision statement, housing, houselessness, other things that we care very much about are not reflected here. It's just about how do we make the most of our open space? And that's not, that's, that in a, in a, in a vacuum is not something that is helpful to the commission. So I recognize that that makes it hard, and it's hard to get those voices in the room, but providing us with a tool that helps us balance the variety of needs that Douglas County citizens have.
And just to add to that, there was one statement on the vision and values. So the very last bullet says, "Thoughtfully consider the use of resources both financially and environmentally." So that state has a value, yes, we should be thoughtful about it. But that doesn't give us a lot of guidance to what to do next, right? It just tells us that we should think about those things. And I think that's, that's really part of our role, is understanding what our community wants, and, and we've been trusted to make decisions on their behalf around some of these things. But I think when you're thinking about developing values, you have to be very specific that this is the group that I talk to, and this is what they value, and that there may be a whole different group out there that wasn't involved in the process that may value something different. And so how do we keep having discussions about balancing that? There's no, there's no solution or plan. We make progress on things, right? We have strategies, I like that word a whole lot better than solutions. And I, just as you continue into that next phase, it would be helpful to us to just say, like, the group that we talked to, this was what we heard, and this is what they value. But keep in mind that there may be other values, as Commissioner Willie nicely said, that may be competing against that, that are no less important than this one.
Commissioners, I just wanted to add that I was a part of at least one of the listening sessions. I know I had probably an opportunity to participate in many more, but I was in one where I was with one of my community health plan colleagues, Vicky Colley-Akers, and we talked about the values of equitable access to these resources and putting on our community health plan and making sure that that's a value that. So I think that was a message that was shared and I no doubt taken into consideration. So I just wanted to acknowledge, I hear what you're saying and I think that conversation is happening.
Even the question about like public access is not, you know, the whole piece of open space, because some of it is, you know, preserving biodiversity and ecosystem services, which benefit everyone without necessarily meaning anybody else that's put on your land. Now, I think that access to open space for, you know, for all individuals is a piece of that, but it's also not the only piece. So there are so many things to kind of weigh in here as far as how we move forward as a community with shared goals and not just, you know, goals that advocate for one position.
Yeah, I mean, I think what all of the recent comments highlight is that there are, there's lots of angles to look at this from and there's lots of nuances, right, to the weighing of values. And it's always going to be, I mean, for us as decision makers in particular, specific to the context of a situation, right? Whether it's a piece of land and a question of land use for that land. For, for city governments, the question of what land, you know, is of best value for them to annex and what might be the sacrifice that's part of that. And like, there's many of those conversations that are sort of just, I mean, baked into what we do as a body anyway. And I think one thing I want to sort of highlight, and somebody said, I think it was you said earlier, Kim, that, you know, you're looking for, for us to react to and these ideas and values that have generated so far from the people that have been talked to so far is that idea that was suggested, and I'm trying to find it in the slides again, but about the possibility of using public land for, you know, ecologically conscious and conservation based farming practices and to lease that land. That's an example that I just wanted to react to specifically because I really appreciate sort of the layered approach to an idea such as that, right? Like if, for example, some of this floodplain land that we are talking about buying out and potentially trying to look at conserving, how do we then really maximize the, that asset that we have to us as a county and, and what we have done to mitigate harm and risk for residents and to create, you know, more bio, better biodiversity in that space? And also, is it farmable land and does that provide equitable access for folks who cannot and do not have access to own land, but have the skills and the desire to farm it in a certain way? So I'm very interested in that particular idea that was suggested and just wanted to highlight that as an example of something that I think is a really interesting notion and sort of speaks to a lot of different angles by which I think we can look at and talk about what open space means in different contexts, right? It means different things in different contexts.
As far as the agricultural land for, you know, highlighting regenerative practices and such, as far as publicly owned land, the Corps of Engineers owns hundreds of acres of farm ground that are part of the larger area around Clinton Lake. And they have been trying to move in that direction and find people to kind of uphold some, you know, soil conservation and, you know, ecological practices on those lands. But that is worth checking in with them about, you know, are there, how is that going? What, what supports do you need? Because that might be that, you know, something of that is already occurring and we should kind of evaluate what that is and how we can build on it.
Any other comments, questions?
I, I did have a lot of thoughts about the map and I kind of, I'm glad to have Kim's contacts to kind of say like, this is who we've heard from so far. And, and I, I recognize that this is an amazing amount of public outreach already. And here we are saying, here are the voices you didn't hear from. And that's always the struggle and always the case. But I first want to recognize like what an amazing outreach this has been to get to this point. So, and yet, you know, I see, you know, locations that I know have great ecological value that maybe didn't get highlighted, or like the City of Udora actually has an urban growth area that they've, that they have adopted that isn't on here. Baldwin doesn't have an official one, and neither does La Compton as far as I know, but Udora does. So like making sure that that's kind of, if, if that's a piece that we're looking at, making sure that it's for Udora as well as Lawrence. But I think that, that those growth tiers on here for the City of Lawrence, just taking that piece because it's here, is really an excellent place for us to start talking about. Those are two directly competing values. So what, what, what is the process of, or the value of open space in an area that's been slated for at some point, future City of Lawrence growth? How do you balance those two? What do you recommend? Is that getting, getting ahead of the game and having a trail system that can already be put in for, for later city residents? I'm not sure what that is, but I, I think that even within this map, like that's the thing that strikes me as the first conversation to have and also recognizing that it always does matter, you know, who you hear from in terms of, you know, if, if Toy Creek and the Waukesha River are not, or the Waukesha Creek are not valued as highly as neighboring creeks, maybe it's just because we didn't hear from the neighbors that lived right next there. And like Lakeview Lake not coming forward when there's a, you know, whole sort of residents that, that live there and value that and think of that as their home place. So I just know that I recognize the complexity of getting to that point, but I, I, I welcome you to keep an open mind in terms of what's been presented on the map so far versus what other stories there are to be found.
I want to commend you for walking into some waters that seem a little hot, right? So one being tax. So if you don't talk about the cost of something, there's a whole population that won't get engaged in the conversation at all. If you don't put a map out there, then that person says, why isn't my area on the map? So I think that's actually a, that's a very smart strategy, though it can be sometimes a little painful to hear the feedback that maybe Kim, your reference that you were hearing. And I, but I think that's what's important is that, that tells us that there's someone else who's now engaged in a way that hasn't been engaged in the discussion to date because they don't see themselves represented in the plan. And so I, I want to recognize that Commissioner Willie did all, all the work that went in and, and the bravery you have to continue to put out a plan. Just putting out a plan is important. I think I'm very interested in thinking about incentivizing open space. And as we talk about, you know, expanding into the urban growth area, working closely with the City of Lawrence to make sure that it lines up with this plan so that any work that we've done to open space doesn't then get lost as development comes on. And can we think ahead on that? And if we're starting to outline spaces that we think are ideal for open space development, can we then work with developers to say, hey, part of your community benefit, whatever that is, as the city calls it, part of your benefit is aligning to that open space plan? Or maybe they want to put money into a fund that can be used to purchase open space or preserve it or those types of things. So I appreciate all the work that's been done. Commissioner Reed, any closing items?
I, I, sorry, one, one more kind of comment that hasn't been gotten to you yet. And that's in terms of, you know, in climate resilience and fire and fire risk and fire protection, that some things that like the City of Lawrence values mature trees, and they do that by the size of the, of the tree. And that doesn't necessarily come into, it doesn't necessarily match with like state, county and federal funding that helps remove trees in areas that should be pasture. So, and the reason I say that is that we end up with some of these scrubby places. And I'm looking at the area that's kind of designated along near Wells Overlook area in the map, that I think people like looking at. I look at that and say, that is our biggest fire risk in the county, because it's all cedar trees and closed scrub that if a fire gets in there, that's, that's one of the fears that I have in terms of, as a, as a local firefighter, like how, what would we, we would have to have state resources. We, we wouldn't have the resources to get a fire out in that area. So, and yet we have, you know, City of Lawrence says, we value and we will not allow you to destroy, you know, these trees if they're this size, as opposed to, you know, another point of view saying, you know, those trees are in that configuration in this place is maybe not an ecological value. So another set of fun things to wade into when the time comes.
Thank you for that. And thank you all for your feedback. And I think most of all, telling us what would be helpful to you as a decision maker. I know we've got a skeleton here to, to kind of respond to right now, but when we bring forward a plan, we want it to be impactful and really meaningful. And that's something that you can use for the benefit of our community. So that's really good feedback for us.
Well, thank you all for being here and we look forward to seeing the next phase. And we will adjourn until our 5:30 business meeting.